All right, it is seven o'clock, so I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the common council of the city of Platteville for Tuesday, July 2014, and we'll start with roll call.
Dick Bonin?
Here.
Ken Killian?
Here.
Eileen Nichols?
Here.
Amy Seboth?
Here.
Mike Den?
Here.
Barbara Doss?
Here.
And Barbara Stackhausen?
Here.
First item on the agenda is consideration of the consent calendar. The following items may be approved on a single motion and vote due to their routine nature or previous discussion. Please indicate to the council president if you prefer separate discussion and action. A is minutes of the June 18th emergency council meeting and the June 24th regular council meeting. B is payment of bills. C is financial report for June. D is appointment to boards and commissions. I have a list. Tonight, the appointments will be for the Board of Appeals, a partial term that will expire in 10/11/14 is Mary Miller, the Redevelopment Authority, Brian Fritz, and the Tourism Committee, Deb Jenny, Matt Zelinski, and Terri Malleat. Licenses, one- or two-year operators licenses, they are in your packet, and F is a permit for a street closing on Division Street from Chestnut to Bradford on July 16th for 27th Annual Division Street Neighborhood Picnic. Is there a motion?
Move adoption of the consent calendar is presented.
Second.
Motion and a second.
I have a...
Oh, you have a question? All right.
Question about the minutes, June 17th, back page, first line, how should that read? City manager noted that the city has a lot of resources that have been appropriated. What's the wording?
Probably a lot of resources.
Lot of resources, okay. Thank you.
Okay, so is the motion and second, comfortable with the change? All right, we'll vote.
Bonin?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Seboth?
Yes.
Den?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next is citizens' comments, observations, and petitions. We do have a lot of people who have signed in, but that is relative to an issue that's coming up later on the agenda, so I'll call on those then. So under citizens' comments, I have two, and the other person wishes to speak about the industrial park property. I assume that that means the agenda item that we have later. If I'm wrong on that, you're welcome to come up during this time. Christina Curris?
Christina Curris, 1490 Deborah Court, and I'm here as a representative of UWE Platteville to give an update on our recovery efforts from the tornado. So just a few key things. We are continuing operations planning for worst-case scenarios of all of our facilities, but we are cautiously optimistic right now. We have construction plans that show us being able to occupy the three residence halls and engineering hall on August 15th. Doesn't necessarily mean complete, 100% done, there will likely be some work continuing and a few rooms offline in each of those, but that we should have most... Rob, our pessimist likes to say that's just if everything goes smoothly, if the truck carrying all the materials doesn't crash on the interstate, or the weather isn't horrible between now and then, but we do have plans showing that we should have occupancy on August 15th, so that's good. The stadium, there is a nice article in the Platteville Journal, so you can get a lot of details on that, but just a couple of key things on that. Biggest thing with that is the turf needs to be replaced. It's on order, it should be delivered to Platteville in early August, but then the installation, it takes roughly 21 days of labor to install. And so, early September is when it should be done, weather dependent on that as well. So hopefully, first home football game is September 15th. For UWE Platteville, we'll be here, but there are a couple of high school football games and some soccer games before that that will be moved. High school jamboree event at the end of August has already been canceled. Memorial Park is off limits, it is dangerous still, tickets are being given for people trespassing in that area. Trees are still falling, and the wind event last week, when it was so windy and stormy, there are additional trees and limbs falling, there are holes, there's... So it is off limits, and it might be off limits for quite some time. We're planning, there are groups working on planning on how to restore that, I know Amy is part of that, some of the faculty at the university in Arborus from UWE Madison and so on. It's going to take a while to get it back, well, it won't be back. It will take a while to get it safe and usable again, so it is still off limits. The M is also currently closed because there is some damage at the tower at the top of that, and so until that has been fully evaluated, the M is off limits as well. But we're working on all of that, and we hope that things will continue to go well with that. Are there any questions? Okay, thank you.
We hope things go well too, thank you. Party in the Park Hometown Festival, Kathy Kopp.
Hello, everybody. I'm here to give you an update from the chamber on Hometown Festival Week, which starts July 19th and runs through July 26th. We have events every day, some days there are two events, but I have posters for each of you...
Thank you.
...that have all the details on there, and then, of specific note, I want to also give you a poster on the 5th Annual Hometown Hog Roast, which is Saturday, July 19th. That event is getting bigger. We have that event held at Uno's property, right next to the chamber, and the last couple of years, we've had in excess of 1,000 people. So it's been growing, but all of the details are there, if anybody has any questions on that. And then, it is also, with a significant amount of pride, I would like to personally hand you an invitation for the annual Party in the Park, which is Thursday, July 24th, part of Hometown Festival Week. The Chamber hosts this every year, and it's a salute to volunteers, where we recognize the nonprofit groups, the service organizations with their Volunteer of the Year. We're expanding that, working with Building Platteville, the city of Platteville, the university, Main Street program, to extend this to be a salute to the volunteers for all of the tornado issues and the emergency services and the cleanup. So, we're expecting a very large crowd, and we're certainly hoping that US City Council representatives will be there to help celebrate all of the volunteers. Oh, and then, I do have another real quick update about, on behalf of Building Platteville, the tornado relief fund is almost at $9,000. So things are coming along really well. Steering Committee's been meeting, getting information together, and we have a caseworker assigned that's going to be working with the families that have suffered the losses, so things are moving along. So, anybody have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next item is reports in your packet, committee reports, Board of Zoning Appeals meeting, Den?
Nothing to add.
Water and Sewer Commission, Killian and Bonin?
No additions on my part.
Nothing to add either.
Redevelopment Authority, Doss?
Nothing to add.
Other reports included are the Airport Financial Report for June, the City Attorney itemized statement, Water and Sewer Revenue and Expenditure Report for June, and Department Progress Reports. Any questions or comments on any of those? Seeing none, we're going to move into the action item, ordinance amending section 3.12 B2, City Plan Commission Council Member Election. Jan, did you want to speak to this, or...
Sure.
Okay.
What this ordinance does is it changes our current ordinance, and it just clarifies that the council member for the Plan Commission shall be elected at the organizational meeting in April, which is the third Tuesday in April.
And that has been our practice, but that wasn't always clear?
Correct.
Okay. In the council information, so. Any questions on that? A motion?
I make a motion to accept this ordinance as stated.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, and we'll vote.
Bonin?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Seboth?
Yes.
Den?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next item is the Knollwood Park Single Track Tail and Trail, and because it was tabled, we do need to have a motion to...
I make a motion, we bring this off the table.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and we'll vote on that.
Bonin?
Yep.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Seboth?
Yes.
Den?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Is there a staff report on this, or...
I can speak a little bit on it. At the time of the council packets, when those were being produced, I had no updates at that time, so you know, it's in your packet, you don't have anything. Since that time, I've talked with one representative from Platteville Human Powered Trails and one representative from the Knollwood branch, who stopped into my office to discuss and inform me of a meeting that was held between the two parties. I was not at that meeting, nor invited to that meeting, so I don't have complete details of what went on. All I know that the results of that meeting were turned into this memorandum or this understanding agreement released by Platteville Human Powered Trails, and it is my understanding that that was delivered by the representative of Knollwood to the residents of Knollwood.
Any questions? Otherwise, we have some people who have asked to speak. Okay. Before we have anyone speak on it, I have this packet of names, and everyone here is registered in favor, so, for the record. Margaret Ruff, Ryan Hagan, Corey Shade, Joshua Savoy, Jared Pick, Tim Ingram, Ambrose Ingram, Lindsay Hollingsworth, Austin Polipski, Tim Donovan, Michael Lambert, Thomas Pitcher, David Carnahan, Melissa Gormley, Zach Steffel, Ronald Wire, Brian Wiesnout, and Marie Fernall, Bob Wire, again, I guess, Carrie Bab, Kyle Klotz, Janice Wire, Deb Meyer, Chad Jordan, Tom Lee, Jane Dunham, Robin Tim, Ann Donovan, Lynn Berger, Joseph Jakonow, Mandy Jakonow, Mark Sethney, Lee Negrell, Terry Hanson, Carly Borcheting, Mark Hirsch, Tom Young, Laura Speaker, Chris Hanagraff, Steve Rowley, Kayla Doan, David Baker, April Baker, Joanne Beraldi, Robert Gates, Elizabeth Gates, Bob Saris, Jenny Schumacher, Deb Ellingson, Hannah Adams, Hannah Adams, Dwayne Ford, Heidi Dias-McBeth, Bill McBeth, Audra Shields, John Shields, Dan Ellingson, Mike Penn, John Peterson, Angie Wright, Jeff Bubolts, Ann Curran, Bob Gates, Christopher Schulenberg, Jessica Schulenberg, Kayla Murphy, Lawrence Ward, Russ Ruck, Beth Ruck, Kyle Ebbey, Nicole Ebbey, Ashley Smith, Eric Melson, Connie Chandler, Jody Belkin, James Hamel, Rita Steinbach, Dan Steinbach, Steve Chandler, Cindy Case, Kelly Howery, Roger Howery, Nikki Simmons, Brian Doe, Matt Beebe, Steve Banfield, Don Whedon, Amanda Whedon. And we have some emails, again, in favor, Kara Tyson, Mella Lewandowski, Cassandra Hirsch, and Mackenzie Scanlon. We also have three individuals who have asked to speak in favor of the Knollwood Park Trail, and the first one is Jason Tyson.
Jason Tyson, 1024 Walnut Dell in Platteville. Just a couple of brief items we talked about in the last meeting. Have a survey completed, so we did have the survey wrapped up pretty quickly afterwards. Delta 3 was gracious enough to help us out on that, and they turned that around pretty quickly. We were able to pay for that out of a couple of anonymous donations that we received through the community, and I think that went real well. You know, I think, in showing with the list that you've read, with the anonymous donations, that we've really seen a real strong backing towards this project, and we've been pretty excited about everyone. It seems like when we're going places, everyone's always asking us, "How's the project going? Where is it at?", different things to go along with that, so we've seen a real strong backing, I guess you could say, from our perspective of the trail. We're pretty excited about the opportunity, as well as we've had the statement of intent that Luke just spoke about. We wrote that up, our board did approve that document, we reviewed that at our last, or we finalized it at our last meeting. Mark will probably mention, he went around and handed out a lot of them to the community or to the neighborhood as well. We also posted on our Facebook page, we provided it to Luke as he discussed, and so that's that. Yeah, so I guess that's it.
Thank you.
When was the meeting? We postponed this at the last council meeting until tonight. Now, when was that meeting held?
That meeting was, was that last, it was last week. Oh, oh, I'm sorry. I thought you meant our meeting for the 7th and 10th.
The meeting was the neighborhood.
I see a gentleman here is pulling that up, I don't have the exact date.
I think it was shortly after our last council meeting, because I remember some folks...
Hopefully, it was after the 11th.
11th, June 11th.
June 11th.
Well, now, what have we gained? They had their meeting June 11th, I thought we were supposed to have one after the last council meeting, which was the 24th.
There were two council meetings. Yeah, there were two council meetings in between there, Dick, so actually, from the time that the motion was made to table it, they did have the meeting, because we waited two council meetings to bring this back, not one.
I talked to Tom Segworth, and he emailed me and said that you folks had set up a meeting to talk with everybody, and that it went quite well.
Good.
The meeting was held after our council meeting?
The first meeting?
Yep, it was held after our decision to table it.
Yeah, I know I did, but I was thinking it was the last meeting, okay.
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 Thank you.
Yeah.
Les Hollingsworth?
Les Hollingsworth, 1027 Walnut Dell. I was actually kind of the point person for that, for those meetings and for that relationship that we were trying to develop with the Knollwood residents. And to your question about, what have we gained? I think we've actually, from PHPT's perspective, we've really gained a stronger relationship with the neighborhood by taking this month. I think there are still some folks out there that, if they'd had their preference, no trail would go in. I don't think we can win everybody, but I think we have gained a lot of trust in this, through this process. I actually spoke with Tom Segworth almost daily, and I don't mean that metaphorically, literally, daily, for the last three weeks, trying to figure out how we can make this work, multiple meetings, and I think we finally produced something that has won as much support as we possibly can. And one of the things I also want to point out about the green sheets is, that's, those, I think we ended up with probably, what, about, I don't know, 60, maybe somewhere in there, 60 signatures? That was from about two days of work, not even. There, we barely touched our network of people that want this. We put a petition out in May, an online petition, and hit several hundred signatures pretty quickly. So the community really is asking for this, and I'm really, really pleased that we actually did get this time, that we got this three weeks, or whatever it is, since June 8th, to chat with, to try and come to some sort of agreement, and so it's been a very good end result, I think. But if you have any questions about the process, or what exactly went on in those meetings, I'm certainly happy to answer them before I sit down.
This memorandum of agreement, just give me a quick point or two of what you said, since we don't have a copy?
Sure. Basically, what it is, it's a statement of intent, essentially saying what we are planning to do. So we have the trail marked out now, so what you see is what you get on the trail, whereas before, our earlier proposals were, for all practical purposes, ballpark estimates. And so, the trail is flagged out now. There's also clearly stating that we are going to stay at least 10, what was it, 10 feet off of private property boundaries. In actuality, once we flagged out the trail, most of it is, like, I'd say probably 80% of it, is more than 20 feet, and a pretty good chunk of it is actually between 30 yards off, around 30 yards off, so we could stay quite a ways away from people's property lines. As we said earlier, we didn't, we don't want to be seen either, just as we, or we don't want, we don't want you to see us, we don't want to see you, as far as residents, up in that neighborhood. And then the other, other things in there were, that we aren't going to be cutting down living trees, you know, trying to make sure that we're protecting the trees as best as we can there. Trying to think if there's anything else that was major in there. I think that's kind of the main bulk of it. I think there's a little bit of stuff about signage in there, that some of the neighbors were especially concerned about noise with motorized traffic, and so we would make sure that we have it signed to say that this is human-powered only, or silent sports only. And then also, making sure that the trail is marked to let people know where they're going and things like that.
There's also something in here, Les, about organized events, larger than 50 attendees, you will not conduct organized events.
Yes, as far as Platteville Human Powered Trails goes, we're committing to not hold events larger than 50 there, but one super-duper important thing to point out is that we obviously have no authority nor even influence over other groups, so if the Boy Scouts wants to come out and do a geocaching event and bring 100, then there's not a whole lot we can do about it. You know, so that might be something that we would want to chat with Parks and Rec about, maybe, for the long term, is, because, you know, a coherent and formalized and complete policy for exactly what the park rules and things are, and I know there's a little bit of stuff out there right now, but tightening up some of those rules and clarifying some of those rules would certainly be good in the long haul, and PHPT would certainly be willing to work with Parks and Rec on how to do that.
Any other questions?
No, I would just point out that it was only today, this, I think maybe at noon, that I received this memo, statement of intent, from the city manager. So, there are council members that probably didn't access their email today and had not seen this, but everybody now has a copy, thanks to a member of your group.
Perfect. One other super-important thing, too, that I just want to point out, as far as what exactly this document is. Originally, we kind of pursued this from the perspective of a memorandum of agreement or memorandum of understanding, but at the same time, our group was also mindful that creating a formalized agreement between two people that actually don't own the property gets kind of weird. And so, that's where we ended up with this statement of intent, and that's the language that we chose, if that makes sense. All right, hearing no other questions?
Yes.
Sure.
Have a question?
Why, just go ahead.
My question relates to this letter that I received tonight, and it asked about the two oak trees, as far as whether the roots would be damaged. What is your technique, procedure, as far as when you encounter oak roots? Oak wilt can be spread via the roots, it can be spread from tree to tree via roots. So what will be your procedure as far as protecting against oak wilt?
Sure. Well, IMBA has standards, that's the International Mountain Bike Association, has guidelines for staying away from trees, and I want to say that it's, was it, three feet? Two or three feet away from the base of the tree actually is sufficient to not cause damage. Now, if there's exposed roots, if it's at all practical, we will try to go around those. But the other thing to point out is that bikes and foot traffic, there's absolutely zero, and I don't mean metaphorically, again, zero research out there, that says that traveling over or in the proximity of these trees will cause damage. And I've done a lot of research on this, trying to find a counter-study to prove me wrong, and I have not found one yet. There's just, there's nothing out there that suggests that this will cause damage. Now cows, because I know that if cows walk repeatedly too close to trees, it will trample down, and it can kill roots, and that's documented. But cows are, what, huge? I don't even have the first guess at how many pounds that are, but a 200-pound bike and rider combination moving quickly over a surface will not damage trees.
I believe the person is getting at the question of how much the roots will be cut to make the trail. In other words, to make the proper slope that you want, and a width of eight feet, how much will the roots be cut for these two trees? This person is asking that, and then suggesting that an expert be obtained to give an opinion.
So how much would the roots have to be cut?
Yes, how much will the roots be cut to make the trail of the oak trees?
Mark might be a better person to answer that question than I could. He's been building trails for way longer than I could, and I know he's on the docket to speak.
He is, he's next.
If we could just table that question, and then Mark can address that when he comes up.
Well, if Mark addressed that, okay.
Well, one other, I do have a question. Ken mentioned eight feet, this trail is not eight feet wide.
No.
That's what I thought. This trail is significantly, I mean, I've walked the trail at Mountain View Park, I would say it's, I don't know, when I walk side by, yeah.
Maybe that.
Right. It's about when I swing my arms, that they don't hit the trees.
Exactly, it's just wide enough for a person to pass, and interestingly, now, since you brought that up, that first meeting with the Knollwood residents, I think it was John Guile and Tom and Jen, I think is what her name was, I can't remember her last name. That first meeting was actually, we spent the first huge part of that meeting just showing pictures of what this is that we're doing, to dispel some of those myths and this information that's out there. The trail will generally be this wide. It may open, it may open up a little bit on a corner, you know, because when you're making a corner, it makes you longer or wider, but even then, we're nowhere near eight feet.
Well, I walked the Mountain View Trail, and to me, it's wider than what you're suggesting, as far as the cleared area, the cleared area.
And did you walk the trail in the woods?
I walked the Mountain View Trail.
Not the paved trail, though, the other one?
Right.
I walked the bike trail, the walking trail.
I walked the, the bike trail, the walking trail.
The dirt trail in the woods, because there's two trails, there's the-
Yes, I understand that. Luke can attest that I walked the trail, because I was asking where the trail started.
I did my best to steer you in the right direction.
I've walked that trail too, I don't remember eight feet, I mean, there's a clearing in the bottom.
But I'm saying it's wider than this.
In certain areas or all through it?
Yes, yes.
The other thing to remember too though is that's, that woods is pine. Um, and, and a lot of it actually was even pretty roughed up before we even got there. And so, um, uh, the, the width that we cleared is actually, if you look on the ground, you can see where we scraped off the pine needles, which kind of ties in a little bit with your, your root question. Our biggest tool, our most common tool that we use when trail building is a rake. Literally, we're scraping off the debris. Rakes, weed whips, um, uh, and hose occasionally, um, to, to try and get that level surface. But, but a huge chunk of our trail building is a rake.
Issue with the root situation is strictly by compaction, and that's not going to happen with the bikes and people walking. And example, when we had the trees up at the Smith Park, I talked to the forester about it. He said, as long as you kept the heavy equipment off of the area of around the tree, you don't have the compaction of, and you're damaging the root filaments, so that eliminates the water uptake. So that's not going to be an issue for you guys.
No.
My question is different. My question is asking about how much cutting will take place to make the trail.
You're talking about making the grave of the trail?
I'm not asking about compaction.
Just to clarify, I believe Ken is referring to the benching that was mentioned originally. And that, I believe, is the concern with the, the roots, whether that benching would cause the roots to be damaged.
Yeah.
Perfect, and that will be a, a good question for Mark to address about how, about how deep we bench, um, and, uh, which, um, yeah, I'll just leave that one to Mark.
Any other questions for Les, all right, oh, Dick?
In this, also in the same letter Ken's referring to, uh, this person's talking about, uh, PHPT members have told them that if erosion occurs, trail will be turned back to nature and no longer used. Then he's wondering who is responsible for repairing the damage the trail caused.
I think that person is mixing two comments together, um, almost like a soundbite. Because, uh, what the latter half of that comment was, was, uh, let's say we put this trail in and some crazy turn of events happens and, and, uh, and the city decides that this trail can no longer be used. If we left it alone, nature would take it back before the end of the season, six months. It would, it would be completely grown back in. So I think that's the latter half of that. As far as erosion goes, uh, we build trails to minimize erosion as much as we possibly can. And then when there is an issue, we fix it. Trail construction, uh, is not a put it in and we're done kind of deal. For us, trail construction is ongoing, it's continuous, it never stops. Uh, with Mark's property, uh, there are a handful of us that are out there several times a month working on the trails. Constantly tweaking, constantly improving. If we start to see signs of erosion, we start to fix it. So it's a, uh, the, the, the concerns about erosion, um, I could see that if it was, if, if, if trail maintenance, trail construction was kind of a one and done kind of thing, but for us, it's actually an ongoing process.
Other questions? All right, Mark, thanks.
My name is Mark Hirsch, I live at two zero seven six Airport Road. So first off, I want to thank the council, I want to thank the Knollwood residents for their considered attention and their, you know, interest in moving this process through constructively and creatively. It's been a challenge, it's been interesting, um, change is always a little consternatious. And so in an effort to, to mitigate all these challenges, we've done everything imaginable. After our meeting last week when we drafted the statement of intentions, we presented a copy to Tom and in order to guarantee that every resident got a copy, I spent two days on the holiday weekend knocking on doors in Knollwood. Um, I was able to engage several dozen residents, I had a very nice conversation with John Guile. Um, I spent a great deal of time answering questions personally for many of the people in the neighborhood. I guaranteed that all of them had the statement of intentions and the, the outcome was very good. I mean, uh, they shared some information with me, I shared some information with them, and I think the outcome is a better understanding of what our goals are and what their interests were as well. Um, one young man, he introduced me, uh, I'm sorry, Tom Young, or Tom Sigworth introduced me to a young man who lives next to him, who probably had the greatest number of concerns about the trail. Um, he invited me into his house, showed me the, the view he would see if and when the trail is constructed. He outlined his concerns and I told him as a representative of the group that we would meet with him if the trail is authorized and we would make every effort possible to guarantee that the out and back trails are as far as possible away from his property without causing safety issues. Les, Tim Ingram and I went out last Sunday, found the survey marks, based on those survey marks, we went through the forest and we marked the trail as far as we could possibly get it from anybody's property. Our goal is to satisfy the neighborhood's interests. Probably the, the most interesting outcome of my two days of door knocking was the very same young man saw me on the second day of knocking on doors and he saw me when he drove by, he did a U-turn and he came back and he said, hey, Mark, he said, I really want to tell you, I appreciate the efforts the PHPT and you have done to communicate with the neighborhood. And he's an avid fisherman. And he said, Mark, he said, it really got me thinking about this. And he said, if someone told me that I couldn't fish a part of the lake, a public lake that I really like, and the only reason was because the people that lived in cabins or homes nearby didn't want to see my boat, I would be very disgusted. And it's a perfect analogy to our goal and our objectives here tonight. So, um, it was nice to hear him recognize and appreciate where we were coming from as well. So I think we're, we're in a good place mutually with the neighbors and hopefully we can pass a vote that supports the process and we'll have the Knollwood Trails. And I'll just toss something else out, um, the communities of Decorah, Iowa, very similar to Platteville, the community of Dubuque, Iowa, uh, they've done some things that are very forward-thinking with regards to hiking, walking, biking, uh, human-powered trail-type activities. And these communities have created an integrated transportation plan that specifically addresses these modes of transportation. I know in Platteville now we have the sheer lanes on Main Street, but there are many more things that we should be considering, we should planning, be planning to do. And it will require a proactive effort, effort so that we don't find ourselves in the same situation we were with Knollwood where it's reactive. So, um, hopefully we can vote in support of the Knollwood Trails and move Platteville forward, thank you very much.
A question.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Go ahead.
About the oak roots?
Yes.
Where will the trail go in relation to the oak trees?
Yeah, honestly, Ken.
How much cutting will take place?
Yep, honestly, Ken, when we walk through there.
And if they're cut, what is your treatment of the roots?
Point blank, no roots will be cut, none. If, if you read the statement of intention, no live trees greater than three inches will even be touched, they won't be touched. On my property, you know, Mike gave a great analogy too with regards to what the city forester said, uh, comparing to Smith Park. I, I go to Smith Park and little kids are climbing on the oak roots. I mean, those kids with their cleated shoes climbing on the roots are going to cause more damage than anything we will. But our goal is we're avoiding the trees one hundred percent. When we walked through that property last Sunday, I mean, literally it was like a recon mission. We were on our hands and knees because there's so much debris in there as a result of the storm, just trying to find the survey markers. But in reality, we were not within ten yards of a single oak tree. Um, I had a conversation with Deb Kloster up there who is very concerned about the oak trees. And in order to alleviate her concerns, since nobody perceives us to be experts and, and we're not claiming to be, but as far as trail building, we don't damage the trees, we don't, benching, benching the trail, we don't bench any of the tree roots because that's going to damage the tree roots, damaging the tree roots could potentially compromise them, we don't want to compromise the trees. Um, I suggested to Deb, and if you guys feel that you're compelled and feel there's a necessity, Evan Larson from UDB Platteville, he's a geology professor, his field of expertise is oak studies. You're not going to find a sharper guy to answer that question for you from a scientific perspective. Anything else?
We're not going to cut any roots?
Absolutely not.
Oh.
Absolutely not.
Any other questions?
How much, uh, limb did you have to clean out? How many limbs did you have to clear out after our windstorm?
Oh, we haven't cleared out any as a matter of fact, we were up there just trying to find the survey markers and we were putting, uh, the, the red survey flags out. And actually, I talked to a lot of the neighbors and I encouraged them to walk back in there and take a look and see, hey, do you have any serious concerns, which I really doubt anybody is. But no, we have not even begun to deal with debris removal. And if and when we start building the trail, uh, when we get to an area where there's, uh, we encounter at least two very large trees that have gone down in there, and when we encounter those things, you pretty much cut a path through them and then let mother nature do her part. We just create an opening and go through it.
So did those owners that, when you went through to find the, the markers on their lots, were they there?
Uh, we didn't-
Remember, I made a comment-
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Did they know where their lot lines were?
Oh, no, nobody knew where their lot lines were, nobody claimed to know where their lot lines were, and I understand why. I mean, those survey pins, you know, with, much like we said, the trail disappears, a survey pin hammered in at ground level, it does not take long till it disappears, mother nature does her part. That's why we hired the survey guys, they came out, they had an idea wherever they, where they are, they use metal detectors to locate them. Um, and, and if you go to the neighborhood and you look where the server, survey markers are with all of the homes on the south end of, I believe it's Hillcrest, uh, the survey markers for several of those homes are probably twenty yards, uh, into their yard from where they've been mowing. And it's unintentional, it's unintentional, and I understand, but just that was an indication, that was one of the things that, that came out. But we also discovered that where one of our, our members had flagged a potential trail, he had indeed flagged within people's private property. So all those issues have been corrected, that was the benefit of the pin survey.
Other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
We do have a letter that Ken has referred to, um, in opposition to the trail. Basically, the last line says, please do not approve this destruction, that will occur for a one-mile trail used only a few months of the year and, and the oak trees. Question is brought up in here and also the wildlife. So that was signed by Deborah Rice, William Kloster, Wendell Rice, Peggy Rice, residents of nine seventy-five Highberry Circle. So we did receive one letter in opposition. Any further council discussion on this question? Or is a motion would be in order? Yes?
I move we, uh, endorse or allow the plan for the Platteville Human Powered Trails to install the proposed single-track trail in Knollwood Park with the understanding that no trees greater than three inches in diameter will be removed, that, uh, PHPT will do the construction and maintenance at no cost to the city, uh, that there won't be large events hosted there by PHTP except for perhaps a grand opening, and that, uh, the, as recommended by the Parks, Forestry and Recreation Committee, that a minimum of ten feet setback from any existing lot line be maintained, uh, that, uh, and that the trail be adequately marked, it will have two-way traffic and, uh, that the trail be constructed, uh, in conjunction with International Mountain Biking Association trail building standards. No, and no motorized traffic. Yeah, I said that.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
There a second?
I'll second it.
Right, we have a motion and a second. There's no further discussion, then we're going to vote.
Bonan?
Hesitant, yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Sebo?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, next item, information and discussion, ordinance amending section thirty-six fifteen and forty-one oh eight in tax against in public places, exceptions.
Yes, this is a, uh, ordinance, uh, a suggestion for an ordinance change, um, which does primarily two things. One, it, it kind of clarifies our current rules for issuing alcohol permits, um, such, such as when we issue permits that for, uh, people that are reserving one of our shelters and also other temporary Class B liquor, temporary Class B licenses. And the other thing it does is it also allows for, um, campers to have alcoholic beverages in Mountain View Park, while camping, um, on their sites and then expanding that, that they can have a picnic or something between the hours of, uh, six, uh, six o'clock and ten thirty PM, which are the stated hours of the, the park. So it's looking to clarify those two things. This, uh, ordinance went before the, uh, Parks, Forestry and Recreation Committee and passed and, or the suggestion was recommended by that committee, and it was also recommended by the licensing committee.
Questions? Okay, this will be on for action next time. Next is rezoning for one thirty and one fifty Market, Joe.
Yeah, we received, uh, a request for the rezoning of the property at one thirty Market Street. It's just on the, the north side of Smith Park, uh, that property is for sale, uh, we have a potential buyer that's interested-
You mean City Park?
City Park, what'd I say?
Smith Park.
Sorry. I was thinking oak trees. City Park, um, north side of City Park, right behind you. The property is for sale, they have potential buyers, the applicant, um, would like to use that property for a spa, uh, salon. And the current zoning, which is institutional, does not allow that type of use. And actually, the, the property now is, well, it's a single-family home now, it's been residential, either duplex or single-family, as far as I can tell since it was built, which is also not permitted in the institutional zoning district. So it, it seems to be that district was applied to that property in kind of conjunction with that strip of properties and not really looking at the use of the property at, at the time that was designated. So, uh, talking to the applicant, we, we came, kind of came to the conclusion that the CBT, uh, district would be the best fit based on the location of that property and their proposed use. You know, by definition, the CBT, it's a transition district between the downtown and the surrounding, uh, property, uh, single-family or residential properties, and that's kind of the situation we've got with that property. So that's the, the recommended zoning or the requested, uh, rezoning for that property. Uh, the one fifty Market Street property is one I threw in, and I apologize again to Margaret for the poor communication breakdown that we had, but I looked at her property, which is right next door, uh, similar situation, not quite as severe, but she does have a use that does fit in that district, but it's still, it's a, it's a privately owned property in the institutional district. In my mind, it's not a good fit. If you look at the uses of the institutional district, it's government buildings, it's churches, it's schools, it's university, a very limited use of properties that I think a private individual could really use in that district. So, um, I, I actually envisioned a similar problem with, uh, that property at some point in the future of somebody trying to make a viable use of that property. So I, I had suggested we look at, you know, both of them together as long as we were having this discussion. So, um, that's how that property came in to this, uh, action as well. But the main request is regarding the one thirty Market Street property. This item did go to the Plan Commission last night, and actually many of you were there, so you heard the discussion, but it seemed to be the, the main discussion kind of centered around other potential uses that could be, uh, at some point included with that CBT zoning, not, not the proposed use that the applicant is, is considering. So there was a suggestion to consider the B-one district instead of the CBT. You know, the Plan Commission, I think, had some considerations for that, but they felt that the CBT was a better fit based on its location and, um, the intent of that district. So, um, they did recommend approval of the rezoning, I believe it was a four to two vote, and staff does recommend approval of that. I believe it was a four to two vote, and staff does recommend approval of that. The public hearing will be at the next meeting. Any questions?
I have a question. What is the parking requirement for each property as far as their use or intended use? So 130, 150, how many spaces are required in the CBT?
The CBT requires 75% of the uses normally required in the zoning ordinance, but for an existing use, there's, I don't remember if it applied, I think it was B2 in the CBT, I'd have to check, that we changed the code a while back, that it only applies if you expand the building. But I think that-
So for example, a spa, how many spaces do they have to have, if any?
I don't have enough information at that point, because I don't know the number of employees and so forth.
And if they have, what's upstairs, is there going to be a-
They're currently considering the-
Residents upstairs?
Yeah, there'd be, I think, a one-bedroom apartment.
So how many spaces does a residence have to have?
They would have one for the apartment under the normal zoning, and then the spa would depend on the number of employees, and you take a fraction of that because it's in the CBT. So it's probably two spaces, maybe three, I would guess. The property currently has a-
You don't know for sure exactly what the need is going to be?
Right, because I don't know the actual employees and so forth on that use at this point.
And then the health, the other one is the health clinic, correct?
Correct.
How many spaces are they required to have?
That I don't, well, I think she's got two employees, so, but hers is an existing situation, so there would be no parking requirements. Changing the zoning doesn't change the existing use, so she would not be impacted by any parking rules.
But, okay, but if it goes to CBT, there's, are you saying she's grandfathered in?
Correct. Because the use is already there.
So institutional does have parking requirement?
All the zoning ordinance districts have parking requirements.
Central Business doesn't have parking requirement. So what's the parking requirement for that property, 150?
I don't know the answer to that.
Okay.
But like I said, it would be impacted, because her use is already there, so that would not change.
The reason I'm, part of the reason I'm asking is that last night, we were talking about future use, potential use of these properties, and talking about frats and-
Right.
And amount of parking required, so that's what I'm, part of getting at.
Yeah, I know that the applicant has talked about, there's a very small, one-stall garage at the back of that property now, they would consider removing that and putting in parking at that location. So they do have some ability to provide some parking, it would be limited because it's not a large property, but they do have some ability to provide parking.
Other questions?
I guess I'd like to find out precisely what the requirements are.
I can have that for the next meeting.
I would appreciate it very much.
Could you provide that in our packet?
And also, since a lot of the discussion, at least at the Plan Commission, was about the lawful uses, I was going to include the listing of each district and what uses are permitted.
Any other information you'd like to ask for? Anything else, Ken?
Well, I guess I have a question that Joe probably can answer. Margaret's here, did she want to be included in that change? Did you guys have a talk about that?
I told her to, at any time she says no, she's out.
Okay.
So she's in until she lets me know otherwise.
Okay, sounds great, just wanted to know, thanks.
In until she's out.
Right.
All right. The next item is a preliminary plat for the Platteville Industrial Park, number seven. And is Ann Mayer here? Okay.
She left, she might have got called.
Yeah, she said she's on call, so she, she had asked to speak, so I'm not sure what she was, what she was going to speak about, because she didn't say.
Well, she was, devaluing of her property.
Okay.
She had four things on there.
What property does she own?
Right next to the industrial park.
What property next to the industrial park?
The house.
So-
East Side Road.
The one on East Side Road?
East Side Road.
Is this Mrs. Johnson's?
No, no, this is Ann Mayer. It's right next to the South House.
Lot what?
So-
I believe it's right next to Lot 44, proposed Lot 44 on the map.
Forty-four.
Lot 44.
Okay. All right, so we need to have a staff presentation on this.
Yeah, this is regarding the property that the city recently purchased from the Rosemeyer family for the expansion of the industry park. This proposed preliminary plat would divide that, about 39 acres, into lots that would be made available for marketing for the industrial park. The intent, if you look at that proposed plat, was to, well, it creates nine lots, but the intent was to create a variety of lot sizes that could be marketed to different types of industries based on their land needs. That's why the lots are a different size, but they range from 1.7 acres to seven and a half acres, and they've kind of aligned the larger parcels in a way that they could also be combined if somebody wanted a larger parcel than the 7.5 acres. So that's how they kind of came up with that layout. The plat does include an extension of Vision Drive from where it currently intersects with East Side Road, so it will eventually connect over with Phillips Road, so that does alleviate another issue that we've got, is that Phillips Road currently dead ends, which has caused some issues with access in that area in the past. The plat also includes some outlots, at least on the part of the land that the city owns for a future extension of Phillips Road, and also the same thing on the south for a future extension of Evergreen Road. So since we don't have all the right-of-way, they're just outlots at this point, but it would preserve that land for a future extension of those streets. There are some access restrictions, vehicular access restrictions, two, three of those lots on East Side Road, that's the dash lane, so Lot 44, 41, and 39 would not have direct access from their parcels. The intent is that the access would come off of Vision Drive and then eventually off of Evergreen Road for those lots. But otherwise, the lots, the plat does meet our minimum requirements for lot size and so forth of the ordinance. Plan Commission did recommend approval. Any questions?
There is one thing that I'd like added, and that is the drainage arrows showing which way water flows. That was something I'd requested of the engineering firm at the Pedic meeting, and it looks like maybe it wasn't on there. Typically, you want to show where the water is supposed to drain so that it doesn't cross from one lot to another after all the grading occurs.
Will the future residents of these lots pay anything toward the proposed stormwater management pond? A appropriate share? Or is that going to be free?
It's, yes.
Paid by the city?
That's part of our marketing ability with the sale of these lots, is that each purchaser will not have to provide their own pond when they construct their facility. It's already, it will already be provided for this development.
They'll pay a portion of the pond, like you did up at, by Farid's up there?
No, they will pay for the lot, the lot based on the land price formula for that land.
But as far as the price of the land, they may pay very little. So it means that they're going to do very little contribution for pond cost.
The answer to your question, Mr. Killian, is no.
That's what I want to know.
But we also received an EDA grant to help address the issue of this infrastructure and the pond. Please what?
So I guess the next question is, how much have we left to pay as far as the cost of the infrastructure and the pond? I don't expect you'd have the answer now, but I'm just-
Half.
Sitting on it.
Okay, well, that's a question that will have to be answered then.
Yeah.
The project is expected to be $1.6 million, and half of that cost is through the EDA grant, and the other half is through TIF for taxes.
So the increment is paying for it?
Tax increment, yes.
Other questions?
Just one of the other things I have to think about on her was, she said if we'd have bought hers, we'd have 40 acres, because hers is for sale.
Okay.
That's about all I can remember off of her scratching.
Well, she'll have an opportunity if she can make the next meeting, so we'll discuss it again then. Annexation and rezon on 1536 County Highway B.
Okay, this is the, one of the properties that we recently acquired, former Kalmbach Properties. That property, since it is owned by the city now, but it's currently located in the township, the request is to annex that parcel into the city. It is contiguous to the city limits, so since we own it and it is contiguous, we can do a direct, petition for direct annexation of that property. It's fairly straightforward process, so that's what we're going through. We're also, staff is also recommending we do the formal designation of the zoning of that property at the same time. It's currently a single-family home, it's owned R1 in the ET area, we would just change it to R1 under Chapter 22, so it's also a straightforward rezoning request. Plan Commission also did recommend approval of that request. Any questions?
Yeah, how close is water and sewer to this property?
Right, right to the end of the city limits.
So it's right, so it's within-
Right to the lot line.
Within, pretty close.
Yes, so at whatever point in the future that well or septic fails, they would need to make a connection at that time.
And that becomes the property owner's responsibility, not the city's.
Correct.
And that's clearly stated in any document that we would sell, in any document that we would provide, so that people are aware of this responsibility.
I guess that would be up to the council when you sell the property to disclose that information.
I would suggest that we make that part of the information that we provide to any potential buyer, that if the water and sewer, if and when the water or sewer would fail, that it would be their responsibility to hook in, and that they would need to, that it would not be an option at that point, right?
We have done three showings of the properties on three separate days, and during each of those showings, that issue has come up, and that is exactly how it's been explained.
And similarly, I'm assuming the taxing will change, and then future owners are aware that their tax would go up, right?
They are aware that we are looking to annex the property, and that the council will do that before it's sold.
Excellent, thank you.
Any other questions?
My question pertains to the sewage hookup. Used to be that the state said that if you had a property where the property is close to a city sewer, you had to hook up. Is the city now, the city is making exception to this. Is this an exception to the state law, or is state law been changed?
Isn't that by ordinance? This is all by ordinance.
It was in the Department of Commerce one time, it was in the Senator Eko, Department of Commerce.
To my knowledge, there is no such requirement. To my knowledge, there is no such requirement in state law, that is a municipal requirement.
Well, I used to read it as a state requirement, I used to work with it.
I've had people ask that question of me over the years, and I've never been able to find a law that stated that.
Maybe it's a rule.
I posed that question to the leading municipalities, they couldn't point me in that direction. I talked to individuals with the DNR, and they couldn't point me to any law that stated that. So whether it used to be a law, I don't know, but as far as I can tell, there is no such requirement.
Well, I do remember talking about it, reading it.
I've heard so many people say that's a requirement, that I wanted to find out where it was, and I couldn't find it.
It could be a rule, you could have a law and then set up a number of rules.
Right, which is why I contacted DNR, and they couldn't tell me either.
They couldn't find any requirement like that, is what you're saying, Joe?
Correct, right.
From the looks of the site, the septic system looks fairly new. I think it'll be a long time before that issue comes up again.
You're correct on that area. The plumber that did that called me and asked me why, about the hookup and the laws and all that stuff, and I said, I don't know, talk to the city, but that's, it's quite new.
Any other questions? Next item, resolution authorizing an urban forestry catastrophic storm grant, that's a long name for a grant.
I have hired a grant writer, Angie Wright, to proceed with this grant if the city council moves forward. We've partnered with the university and with the PCA to look at doing an urban forestry catastrophic storm grant event, a grant program. What this grant would do would be to provide approximately $50,000 to the city of Platteville as a result of having the two tornadoes on June 16th. The funds would have to be used to plant additional trees in our community on public property or boulevards. The city has historically discouraged boulevards, trees along the boulevard, that tends to result in broken sidewalks and concrete issues, but we certainly have enough trees that went down in our parks and the cemetery that $50,000 won't recover us. So we're hoping to get started and to try to get $50,000 to help the city plant trees.
Did I hear you say you mentioned university? Are they going to be part of this too?
Well, they've been involved-
Are they going to get part of the money?
They've been involved in the discussion, the university has been involved, the PCA has been involved, and I believe the university and PCA may be partnering on another application. So there will be two applications going into the State of Wisconsin's program, one for the nonprofit PCA to help the university and to plant trees on campus, and one from the city of Platteville. The university is not an eligible agency for this grant, so they're going to work with the PCA.
Other questions? Next is engineering contract for EDA infrastructure project.
Yes. We solicited proposals for our EDA project, we just talked about that with the annexation, or with the plat, and we had three proposals, IIW from Dubuque, CWE from Verocua, and Delta Three here in Platteville. We've reviewed the proposals and we're recommending the award to Delta Three, subject to the EDA approval. Their proposed fee is $152,100. It's, the way the EDA does this is it's a, it's based on qualifications first, and then you negotiate the price, so it, we don't have prices for the other, for the other firms to compare them to because of the way that the EDA does their rules. But we're recommending that we approve contract with Delta Three. They've been working with us on the earlier EDA project, and they have helped us on, in the preliminary stages of this project as well, and I believe that they're, they're best suited for this project.
Any questions?
The money, is it in the CIP, or do you have it in the budget right now?
That's, that's all part of the $1.6 million overall project that we talked about before for this.
So to answer your question, it is in the budget for 2014.
Okay, that's my question.
Okay.
All right, that completes our information and discussion, and we're going to go off camera and have a work session on the 2015, 2019 capital improvement plan, and then adjourn.